Good morning. Welcome to the City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our City Council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on Assistant City Clerk, I should say, Jennifer Smith for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's support our hearts with prayer. Well, we come to you once again, the humblest way we know how, come with bowed heads and humble hearts, realizing that we're in need of you. Again, on today, we thank you for your divine guidance, your leading, your knowledge. We lean not to our own understanding of God, but we look totally unto you. We ask that you guide us through this meeting on today. We lift up every department here, all the citizens of our great city. Thank you for this council. We lift up our mayor. And God, we just thank you for what you've done, what you're doing, and most of all, what you're going to do. We ask it all in Jesus' name, and all that agree, say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and City Council meeting held on October 3rd.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 29th through October 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Has been our practice of late, we are bringing folks from Gadsden City High School to tell about their program. Today, we have Coach Amanda Lewis. She's also the ladies athletic director, first female athletic director at Gadsden City High School, and some of her players. And Coach, please come forward, and we're proud to have you ladies with us today. I know Coach Lewis is our volleyball coach, and maybe even coaching some other sports. So, we're excited to have y'all here today, and welcome to City Council.
Thank you.
Yeah, there you go.
There we go. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Amanda Lewis. I'm the varsity volleyball coach and women's athletic director, and I'm so honored to be here today as a resident of Gadsden and children who attend the schools of Gadsden City. I'm just so pleased to be in front of you guys and share what we do at the high school as well, just the community. Here, I am with a couple of my players. I have Senior McKenzie Thomas and sophomore Avery Parker and sophomore Bella Barrow. And they all play for me and just are very engaged in volleyball as well as other sports and are great representations of Gadsden City High School as well. Our biggest thing with volleyball is we are trying to get into the community with the youth. We have a youth volleyball program that we do in the summer for a week with girls all throughout Gadsden, not just Gadsden City Schools players. So, we are trying to really get involved there and build volleyball as well as getting just the community involved. And so, with us being involved in the community, we are hoping that the community will start being involved with us as well, not just with volleyball, but sports, extracurricular activities, programs that the city has to offer, Gadsden City has to offer. We're doing a Hispanic Heritage Month program, I believe, next week. And so, I guess that was usually people who stand up here need something. So, my need and our need, I guess, would to be more community involvement and to just show faces at athletic events and events that our students are working so hard during school and their after-school activities, just to support them in that as well. So, do you guys have anything to say? Well, thank you for having us up here.
Just a few points. Coach Lewis's husband is also an athletic director at Gadsden State Community College and also our head baseball coach. So, your family is, y'all are always sweating.
We're engaged, we're involved.
Yeah, you've got, and you have, what, three boys?
Three children.
Three children.
I have, yes, a five-year-old, an eight-year-old, and a 10-year-old.
Wow, so y'all are busy.
We're busy.
I'm sure they're all playing sports.
They are.
But we're glad to have y'all in Gadsden and appreciate the energy that you're bringing. And can you tell us anything about our, I don't know if, girls' flag football team?
Oh, they're doing so great. So, this is the first year that we've had a girls' flag football team, and they are rocking and rolling. I think they're, they've won all but maybe two of their games.
Oh, wow.
And it's a great representation of Gadsden City Schools. They're doing a great job.
That's great. Glad to see that program started. I've seen, I've watched it on social media, I mean, I've seen pictures, and I know some of the players.
That's right.
And I know their parents, and so, that's exciting. You might have any questions or comments for Coach Lewis? All right.
All right, well, thank you.
Well, thank you for being here today. All right, you want to do a picture? Yeah, if you will, if you'll come up, stand behind, right in front of this, and we'll get a picture made. This, like, right there? Yeah, oh, they're getting out of the way.
Get away from us, you bitch.
Yeah.
For obvious reasons.
There we go.
All right, count three. One, two, three. One, two.
Thanks, Michael. Thank you, ladies.
Have you seen any of them before?
All right. I resemble that room on.
All right, so we will move to Agenda Item 8, which is the unfinished business. 8A is an ordinance, amending ordinance number 0-47-23 regarding managed care of dogs and cats. This ordinance was tabled for seven days on October 3rd. It requires owners to register and obtain licenses for dogs and cats over six months of age, establishes a permit for commercial breeders, and fines for owners of dogs or cats captured at large that are unlicensed or have expired licenses. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Mr. President, as discussed last week, we had asked for that to be tabled for an additional seven days last week to allow for the legal department to insert some of the language that we reviewed in our previous public safety meeting. So, I would ask that we consider a substitution here, which would be 2023-637.2, which includes some of that additional language that we worked on in the public safety meeting.
Okay, there's a motion to have a substitute?
Second.
There's a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to substitute 637.1 with 637.2, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Move to adopt. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance as substituted, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
And Mr. President, if I could, just add some commentary here.
Please.
What this ordinance actually does, after several weeks and a lot of hard work by individuals in this community, a lot of feedback from the vested parties in this community trying to address the animal population issue, specifically, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Minatra for her efforts on research and feedback on the many different aspects of this ordinance. But essentially, what this does, we require all animals in the City of Gadsden that are older than six months to be spayed or neutered. We will also require all animals in the City of Gadsden to be registered with the city. There will be a $5 annual registration fee if your animal is spayed or neutered, or you could pay $10 for a lifetime registration of your animal. Again, $10 for the lifetime of the animal. And then, of course, if your animal is not spayed or neutered, the cost of that registration would be $50. And we also introduced a few exceptions to this rule that I want to go over real quick. And again, this was based on feedback from a lot of people involved in this process. One, there would be an exception for a dog or a cat that is incapable of breeding or is medically unsuited to undergo a spay or neuter procedure. Of course, that would need to be accompanied by a letter or some sort of proof from your local veterinarian that validates that your animal is not medically able to undergo that procedure. The second exception would be a dog or a cat that's undergoing or has received appropriate training and certification by a recognized agency and is utilized or is retired from use by a law enforcement agency for law enforcement purposes, or by a search and rescue team for search and rescue purposes. So, those working animals, as we would refer to them, would be exempt from that requirement. Another exception would be a dog or cat that is a breed approved and registered with the AKC or a similar registry recognized, and the dog or cat is actively used to exhibit or compete and has competed in at least one legitimate exhibition or competition hosted by the AKC or a registered agency or a similar recognized agency within the last year. So, in other words, if you have a show animal, or your animal is competing in some of these agility programs, or dogs that get into those really fun jumping competitions where you see them run and jump into the water, things like that, you wouldn't be required to have those animals spayed or neutered. And then, another exception would be for a service animal, and again, that would be as defined by the Alabama Code. Another exception would be a dog or cat in the care of a state-registered rescue organization with a valid City of Gadsden business license. And the final would be, there would be some exceptions and carve-outs for low-to-moderate income individuals, so that this wouldn't be an undue financial burden on the low-to-moderate income residents of Gadsden. In other words, if you can prove that you meet those low-to-moderate income requirements, you would not be expected to pay that registration fee. And finally, it adds that you would come to the city or another registered agency of the city to acquire that registration, and you would be given a metal tag that would be adhered to your dog or cat's collar, or a decal that could be attached to that collar. And also, it's my understanding that the intent would be that if your animal is chipped with information, the microchip that can be implanted in the animals for those year animals that don't wear collars or whatnot, that would also be an acceptable proof of registration. And finally, this ordinance will become effective today after passage, but there will be a 30-day grace period where warnings will be given out. So, you do have some time to get to the city and get your animal registered without incurring any sort of penalty. And I can imagine that our Public Relations Department will, and Communications Department will be releasing some sort of formal statement that'll give citizens more information on how to go about meeting this registration. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Appreciate the hard work from Councilman Wilson and Councilwoman Minatra. This has been a long and arduous process. Councilman Wilson has said, "We're not gonna, it's impossible to get it right," probably 100% right, "but there has to be some kind of action taken with the untenable problem that we're having with cats and dogs." So, please bear with us as we move forward with this, and please be mindful of others, and be mindful of your pets. That's what they are, pets. They're not cats and dogs or animals, they're pets. They're a family member. So, please treat them thusly, and it'll make everybody's job a lot easier. All right, so we have voted on that and completed. Now, we have, move on to new business. Agenda Item-
We're gonna do the Section B of unfinished business.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, yeah. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I had gotten excited. This is 8B. It's an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 513 Henry Street. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. This is to convey property to the Gadsden-Edrawell County Progress Council in regard to its Head Start facility. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Just to add, for those who haven't been keeping up with this, we're actually giving the property to Head Start. Previously, in the past, the city owned that property, and Head Start, I believe, occupied it with some sort of agreement. This will just formally turn over the ownership of the Head Start property to that organization.
All right, thanks. All right, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Now, Item 9, new business. I believe we have some items today.
Mr. President, I have two. I'm gonna ask permission for both of these at the same time. We have legal document 2023-764 and then 2023-765. 764 first, both are requested by the planning department. The first one is authorizing renewal of consulting agreement with Jason Harper. This service will be a professional service, including acting as a liaison between client and various public agencies, emphasizing federal entities. The service provided will also include education, information service, and developing, managing any and all stakeholders' relationship as defined by the client. All state and federal guidelines, just to make sure, to be clear, all state and federal guidelines and applicable laws will be followed, including laws regarding compensation for consulting services. 765, it would be authorizing agreement with Williams and Jensen PLLC. This service, the firm shall perform certain services directed by the City of Gadsden, specifically with respect to federal funding, opportunities in legislation that will provide opportunities to attract new industry, support economic growth, and job creation. The firm also assists in identifying or creating such opportunities, engaging in strategic planning, assisting in developing strategies to accomplish those objectives, and advocate with various federal policymakers to support advancement of those priorities. Just to also add to both of those pieces, these will be representatives that will walk the halls of Congress and DC on our behalf, along with state in Montgomery and other areas, to give us a representation from Gadsden in those actual places. And so, I would now ask for immediate consideration for, again, legal department, our document 2023-764 and 765.
There's a motion to suspend the rules and vote on these today? A second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both resolutions as items of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
All right, and motion move forward.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt both.
Mr. President, if I may say, the 2023-764 with Jason Harper is $36,000, and the 2023-765 with Williams and Jensen's PLLC is $96,000.
All right, thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, before, I've got a couple of new business items, but before I do, just a point of clarification on those. Number one, that's not, that's not net new money. That money was approved in the budget that we approved a couple of weeks ago, so it doesn't change. It was already budgeted. And number two, to the mayor's chief of staff, Brett Johnson's point during the pre-council meeting, because of these efforts of these individuals that we've already been working with, it looks like we're in line to receive approximately $6.5 million in federal money because we actually do have a presence in Washington DC. So, this $129,000, $130,000 that we just approved for these contracts, last year, those efforts resulted in almost $6.5 million, it looks like, that the city's gonna get that we otherwise wouldn't have gotten. So, yes, $130,000 is a lot of money, but when you can spend $130,000 and get $6.5 million back in federal grant money, that's a pretty good return on investment, so.
Thank you.
Now, moving forward, I do have a couple of items that I would like to introduce as new business if it's agreeable by the council. The first is a companion of two documents from the Fire Department and the Finance Department. Resolution 736 is authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Cusa Valley Resource Conservation and Development Council. This money, this is $11,600, which will be given to the Fire Department in order for them to be able to purchase what I think are typically called smart boards. These are smart boards that are used in the career tech training facility at the fire school out there to help train and educate individuals about the role of being a fireman and helps them in their development to achieve that certification. So, item number 736 is actually a resolution authorizing the receipt of this grant on behalf of the Fire Department. And item number 772 is actually an ordinance amending our city budget to receive that $11,600. So, if it's agreeable, I would ask that we suspend the rules today and consider this under new business, please.
There's a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution and the ordinance as items of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both the resolution and the ordinance today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt both.
Okay, Mr. President, my next item of new business that I would like to ask for immediate consideration of is a really big project. It's an exciting project, but it's got a lot of moving parts, so I want to make sure we cover this. This will be, I would ask that these be considered simultaneously. This is Items 766, 767, and 773. These, this package of different resolutions and ordinance are addressing our long-term plan that we've been working on to relocate City Hall. Initially, several months ago, we made the approval to purchase the Regions Bank building on Broad Street. That was approximately $2.8 million that was spent out of our undesignated fund account to acquire that property from Regions Bank with the intent of relocating all of City Hall's current tenants and city employees over to that building. Simultaneously, although we weren't able to discuss it at the time because the purchase was still being negotiated, we also had the intent of purchasing the Merrill Lynch building on Broad Street, which is the building directly adjacent to Regions Bank. It's the same architectural style, they share a common parking area. So, the plan was always to purchase both of these structures. That deal has been negotiated to its finality, and so, excuse me, Item number 766 would formally authorize the purchase of the property located at 224 Broad Street, also known as the old Merrill Lynch building, for $2,007,000. And then, Item 767 is authorizing an agreement with Williams Blackstock Architects in the amount of $620,000 that would handle all of the engineering and architecture and building and electrical drawings associated with relocating the city's operations to those two structures. So, the total amount here today would be $2,627,000. And again, that would be for the purchase of the Merrill Lynch building and for all of the architectural and design fees associated with outfitting those two buildings to be able to facilitate our move there. And as we've discussed before, the logic here is that it would clear the way for, hopefully, the future development of this current property that we are occupying now to be an economic development project. So, we'll move out of here, move over to there, then hopefully, that clears the way for a developer to come in and realize their vision with the property that we're on right now. And again, I think it's worth saying two points of order. Number one, all in, we're gonna spend about $5.8 million to relocate to these two, what are soon to be unoccupied buildings on Broad Street. We spent a little over $6 million to build this building 60-plus years ago. So, we're actually spending $200,000 less than what we spent 60-something years ago to build this structure to relocate to the Regions Bank and Merrill Lynch building. I think that's an important thing to note. And the other thing of order, I would say, is the current balance of the city's undesignated fund account is $27,287,706. That sounds like a whole lot of money, but it's about five months of operating cash for the city. And after this purchase, the balance will be approximately $24,800,000. So, we'll still be in a really strong financial position. We'll put the City of Gadsden into a property, again, that would otherwise have been unoccupied and clear the way, hopefully, for the development of this riverfront property that City Hall currently sits on. So, with that in mind, I would ask that the council approve this, suspend the rules, and approve this under new business, please.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider Resolution Number 766, 767, and Ordinance 773 all today as items of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions and the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt all three.
I believe that's all of the new business for today. We'll go to Item 10, department reports, committees, boards. Anybody coming forward with that today? All right. Item number 11 is citizen request to speak. We have two today. First coming is Johnny Baker and Mitchell Chastain with the Marine Corps League, and they're here to talk, to tell us about, and talk about Toys for Tots.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Mitchell Chastain. I think you need my address, and, okay, 2300 Sansom Avenue, over in Alabama City.
Thank you.
I want to talk to you today about Toys for Tots. Also, I'm the local commandant for the Marine Corps League, McLaughlin Detachment Marine Corps League. We did Toys for Tots for many years, and we've given toys to, I couldn't tell you how many thousands of kids through the years, brighten their Christmas, made it a lot better. I've got with me today Johnny Baker. He's our Toys for Tots coordinator. He's worked at Gadsden State Community College for a long time. He's just finished up his two-year tour as National Commandant of the Marine Corps League, which is a really, really prestigious place. In effect, he was the CEO of the National Marine Corps League organization throughout the United States and also the world. He oversaw over 1,200 individual Marine Corps League detachments, which included over 65,000 Marines not on active duty at this time. There's no former Marines, we're just not on active duty at this time. So, I'd like to turn it over to Johnny at this time.
Thank you, Mitch. It's a great honor to be here today. It's the first opportunity I've been here. Born and raised here in Gadsden, 30-year Marine Corps, and 20 years, almost, with Gadsden State. So, I'm very pleased to be able to be here and talk a little bit about Toys for Tots real quick. The Marine Corps League locally here started Toys for Tots in Gadsden about 2009, 2010, and the Marine Corps League ran it for a lot of years. About three years ago, we lost our place to have it. We've been, all those years, we held it at the center of concern at the Catholic Church. About three years ago, there was a great local church group that came and took it over from us. They ran it for two years. And last year, I had some major surgeries on my eyes and stuff, I couldn't run it. I joined it again last year, but there was no Toys for Tots last year for the Gadsden area. The reason that we gave it up three years ago was because we didn't have a place to have it. The center of concern was growing, they were offering more services to their customers going through the Catholic Church, and so, they didn't really have room for us to continue Toys for Tots. We searched around the city, local folks, through the chamber, through various organizations, trying to find a place three years ago, and finally, the church group finally stepped up and did a great thing for us and kept it going for a couple of years. We still, at this day, this year, I decided, there was another church group, a different church group came along this particular year and decided they were gonna do it. He lasted about four weeks or so, I'm not sure. The reason, he called the National Toys for Tots and said, "I can't do it." So, about two weeks before the event started, they called me, knowing that I've done this before, and asked me if I would do it again this year at Gadsden. I said, "Yes, I would if I can find a place." Very luckily this year, through Sheriff's Office- Very luckily this year, through sheriff's office, through another person here in town that had a business, and we now have a place about 728 on Forest Avenue, just next door to Baker's Tire. It's the old Baker Tire Truck Service Stores where we are for this particular year. That's only guaranteed for us from now through December, and then we'll have to vacate. We served in Gaston probably about 750 to 1,000 kids every year while we were going strong, and that's a lot of kids. Nationally, we give out about 10 million kids are served throughout the nation each year for Toys for Tots nationally. 25 million of that, we give kit, that many toys, to those 10 million kids. So, we do make an impact in Gaston. We have tried through the previous administration, and I'm not bad-mouthing the previous administration. They had what they had. We tried to work and try to find something in Gaston. What I'm asking here today is maybe next year that you help us out, look for us a place to hold Toys for Tots for our citizens here in Gaston. If we don't have a location, it takes a warehouse, probably about 3,000 or 4,000 square feet, something like that. It's got to be an area where we can control, can lock up, maybe a little heat, maybe a little air, not necessarily the air, but the heat, so that as we're working in September, October, November, and December, we sometimes have 7,000, 8,000, 10,000 toys that come through our facility. So, we have to have a place here in Gaston to serve the people of Gaston. Those 750 to 1,000 kids that we serve here in Gaston is very important to me and what we do here as Toys for Tots across the nation. So, my appeal to you, my request, I guess, to you is to help us out next year. We're good this year, but it's not too early to start thinking about next year and what we can do to have a place that, come up in February, March. In February, I have to request again to be the coordinator for Toys for Tots. And I will tell you that Toys for Tots nationally has a 97% of the money that comes into Toys for Tots comes back to the Toys for the Kids, only 3% is overhead. That's pretty astronomical in today's age, and that's very verifiable. I'll also tell you that here locally, without a place to do it, we won't be back next year. So, in February, I have to submit for the following Toys for Tots season, but I really need some help to think about anything the city might have, anything the community might have, where it'd be appropriate place. I gave each one of you a brochure of what we do nationally as well, and that brochure was my personal business card. And you're welcome to call me anytime, and we'd be happy to answer any questions or talk to any business or any organization or the city about what we might, could need, or what would be benefit to the kids of this great city. Any questions, please?
Thank you all. Thank you so much. You might have any questions?
Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say to Mr. Chastain and Mr. Baker, good to see you again. It was great working with you and Mr. Walker. Thank you all for trusting our church to take care of that for a few years. It's a lot of fun. Like you said, it's a lot of people, a lot of families that are in need, and I just wanted to say that if you don't have a solution by next year, we will consider taking that on again. That is a major undertaking, but if you don't, I hate the thought of children not being able to receive toys. At Christmas time, we have since then acquired a warehouse. So, if you don't find somebody or the city don't come up with a solution, I'll consider taking that on again on next year.
Yes, sir. And I will tell you also that without the citizen support, the city's support, it just won't happen. And I do appreciate that, and I'll be more than willing to work with you, too. Might be able to use your facility, but if we could find something that we could have a permanent basis, something like that, we'd be more than happy. The Marine Corps League has been meeting in Gaston for 2001. We started our local detachment here in 2001. I'll also tell you that we, the city has been so gracious to our detachment. We were meeting in Elliott's Community Center for 10, 12, 15 years, and outstanding. We really appreciate the support the city's given us as our Marine Corps League detachment. We had to move recently because, of course, they've got a great new building coming up there in that facility. We're now meeting down in Southside because we just couldn't find another location to hold our monthly meetings. And so, but we do appreciate everything the city has done for the Marine Corps League as well as the Toys for Tots for the last 20-something years. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker, Mr. Chastain. And I will ask Mayor Ford's Chief of Staff, Brett Johnson, to, maybe we could get together with the mayor when he returns here in the near future and see what's available and kind of look under every leaf and every stone to see if we can, because this is a great program. Thank you for what you all do for the least of these in our community. It's very appreciated.
Thank you, sir. And I will also tell you, the Marine Corps League does a lot more than just Toys for Tots. Last year, I'm an officer with the department level also. Last year, there was a special tag that was presented. If you look around town, you'll see some of these special tags. It's got a Marine Corps eagle globe and anchor on it. And the Marine Corps League statewide has been the recipients of that 25 extra dollars that we had to pay for. So, the last 10 years, we have been able to help Marine veterans and Navy veterans that's associated with the Marine Corps in the neighborhood of 67, $60,000 or $70,000 every year of grant money to these veterans that needed help right now. And we helped a family about two weeks ago. I got the request about 10 o'clock in the morning. By 1:00, it was paid. That's how fast we were trying to help veterans in that area, and that's what the Marine Corps League is all about, and I just want to share that message. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, next on the citizen request to speak is Mr. Fred Zachary. Mr. Zachary's coming to speak about public accommodations at Carver and youth activities. Afternoon.
It is with great respect that I come before this august body. I'm not coming to ask for anything for myself. I never have, I never will. I'm coming to ask for some considerations. I've heard the prayers and the many, many compliments of the least, doing for the least of these, and the least of these include the children of Gaston, all persuasions, dispositions, racial, religious, and whatever we need to categorize them in. The first thing I want to talk about is the Carver campus. I went to Carver High School, so did my mother, and Carver has long been gone, but there is a facility over there that should be well-maintained because it's probably one of the few historic places in Gaston as it relates to where black folks had some impetus. And if you go back and look at the record, you will find that many, many people who graduated from Carver have achieved great heights and were great citizens, and many of them still live here in Gaston. Now, when a municipality leases a facility, offers a facility for lease, it should, and it does come with some state and federal laws. I will invite you to look at the Americans with Disabilities Act 403.3. Carver is being leased. The grounds are free, but you have to pay. If you're using the grounds, you have to pay to use the toilet. I submit to you, ladies and gentlemen, that is, as I heard the comment from the mayor, that's in the dark ages. So, and it's dark. We need to have access to the facilities, the toilets, when there is something happening on the ground without renting the building. So, we're paying to go to the toilet at Carver. That's just not right. And if you pray and believe, I want you to put that in your prayer category and come up with a different solution. Now, we did meet with the director, we meaning a group of citizens of recreation, and on one event, we got, we had to pay an off-duty person from recreation to come and be the custodian of the key and all the keys, and then that was the way folk got to go in there. There were numerous events over there on the grounds that were not necessarily interested in being housed in the building for classes that had gone before. Now, it's unfair for folks to travel from near and far. Some came from overseas to have to pay, to pay for the use of the toilets, and I'm not exaggerating. That's the way it works, and we were assured that that was going to change, but it has not changed. So, I'm asking that you guys are looking to this issue, and let's get it off the books. It's not something that I want to come here for, and I'm not coming here to be divisive. I never have. I'm coming here to state the reality of issues that they relate to me and my community. So, when we start to talk about that, I hope and I believe that you will do the right thing because it's right, not because you sit in those seats, but because it's right. Then, there is the issue of kids in our community, and after I say this, I'm going to get on up out of here. I've heard all kinds of quick budget stuff this morning. It sounds really great. The city on the hill is returning, and we're going to have hotels and motels and all kinds of things, and beautiful, that's beautiful. I live in Gaston, so I'm glad that it's progressing to that. But I'm also an economic development specialist, worked in Washington, D.C. in that capacity for many years. I understand the language of finance. Some of it is quick and fast, some of it is smoke and mirrors. Now, let's get past the quick and fast and the smoke and mirrors and put in that money that you say you got six months, five months, or go back and reopen that budget and put an aquatic center in for the children in Gaston. And this is not just for black kids. I have gotten calls from folk near and far in Gaston who are going to Center, Hope's Bluff, and other places much smaller than Gaston. We have much of the leadership from Hope's Bluff here now. So, let's get an aquatic center, put in that budget for our kids. Do building all of these builders and turning highways and making all these adjustments are not going to matter because 27% of Gaston population is 17 and under. And so, when you don't build on the youth, you're not building a city. You're just building some buildings and buying some buildings that you're not going to have the capital to sustain. That's just the reality, and I know you know that. Patriotism is a known factor in politics, so I'm not here even discussing, trying to discuss who should be patronized. I know that's happening. It always happens. But make sure that you grow the city in such a way that the kids and the youth of this village have an opportunity to learn how to swim. Kids cannot learn how to swim on sprinkler pads. And I'll leave you with this. Corruption in time collapses of its own weight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zachary. All right, then we'll move to remarks by mayor and counsel. Mayor is out of town today. Mr. Johnson, okay. Councilwoman Latham?
Aye.
You have nothing today? All right. Councilman Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say again, big thank you. Thank you to the council. Man, we're really looking forward to moving City Hall, being in a new facility so that we can continue to conduct the business of the city. So, we just want to say thank you to that. It's been a long time coming. Also, to all the department heads, we appreciate you, all the hard work that's being put in, behind-the-scenes things that we don't always see. But I was telling our engineer earlier this morning, I'm constantly getting reports, people knocking on doors over in the east Gaston area about fixing a lot of the drainage issue, the road, the right-of-way. So, I'm just glad to see progress and new business opportunities opening up in our city. So, we're going to keep moving forward. Just want to say that we're also thankful for our mayor and the staff and just all that you do here at City Hall. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman.
One other thing, I'm sorry, let me not forget about Mr. Bill Avery, my friend. He's putting on a concert, actually, this Saturday at the Pittman. It is, he's asking for $20 donations, and he just did a recording out in Texas, and he told me, he said, "Man, the mayor is coming. You need to come see me, too." So, I wanted to put that announcement out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Want to just put information out there for anyone that is looking for a hot meal for lunch. Every Tuesday at New Liberty Tabernacle there on East Broad, and he's Gaston Pastor Simmons, pastor there, you are more than welcome to come and be a part of the dialogue as well as a hot meal. Happy HBCU Month to all our 14 illustrious institutions in the state of Alabama. As it relates to District 3 as well as the city of Gaston, just want to give a big shout out to all of the new businesses, the businesses that are expanding in District 3, and the business that are celebrating anniversaries. Gaston has a plethora of small mom-and-pop businesses that have been around quite some times, that have been providing great services throughout Inewall County, and also some that are providing great services and products throughout the state. So, I want to encourage them and want to publicly appreciate those small businesses that are in our city. And just as the representative of District 3, I just want to thank those that are District 3, that continue to stay within our district, that are continuing to grow, and then those that are celebrating those anniversaries of their business. Trash and debris schedules, if I'm not mistaken, have gone out. If you haven't received them, you should be receiving them. Please follow the schedule, and I'm only speaking, again, as representative of District 3, please pay attention to those mailings that are coming out that relates to trash and debris. It is very important that we make sure that we look at those schedules and that we govern ourselves as it relates to trash and debris in our communities as it's laid out before us so that we can keep and present a clean community. That is one of the hopes and dreams of many of our residents in District 3, is that we keep and present a clean community, okay? As we continue to work and try to grow our district, along with growing the city. Exhibition driving and donuts have amped back up in the community as it relates to District 3 again. Please, ma'ams and please, sirs, of the owners that go out and buy these vehicles for your children, please, please, I mean, it bothers me that, that I'm sure you also are the purchaser of the tires that go on those vehicles probably every three to six months. Please pay attention and ask questions. What are you doing? Why am I buying new tires so soon? There is a reason, probably, and one of the reasons could possibly be that they're doing donuts in the streets, primarily in District 3. And it has gone from Tuscaloosa Avenue now into the communities to wherever they can turn around and do those donuts. Listen, it is a safety hazard, not only for the individual that is doing it, but it's also a safety hazard for seniors and children that walks the streets, okay? Not only that, but those that live, our community is an older community, and the homes in the community do not have much yard, are protective measures that protects from the street to the house other than a curve, okay? And so, if one of those vehicles get, become uncontrollable, it's going into someone's home, if not business. So, listen, this is very, very, a very, very important announcement from me to you. Please question and talk to your children or young people and make sure that they are not doing this, okay? If for any reason, it's for safety, okay? Also, the time of day that they're doing it. It is done, I mean, at the most weird hours of the night, between 11:00 and 3:00 a.m. in the morning. Goodness gracious. I mean, some of us do want to sleep. And so, again, be considerate. Please, if anything, be considerate, but we really do want you to be safe because, again, it is not my hope that I have to come out there. I'm sure the police chief, I'm sure the coroner, I'm sure the EMA and fire department to come out and see one of you all lifeless because of a poor decision you chose to do, having fun. Big ups to Gaston City High School for, on their, on the past week of homecoming, their win, all of those that play a part from the cheerleaders, the dance line, band, and the football team, and all those entities that play a part with that big win that Gaston City High School brought home for their homecoming. Cold weather is coming upon us. Please check on your seniors. Please also be kind to those that do not have a home that you see throughout your community. If... community. If it's got a jacket in the closet that you're not wearing anymore, please, please, please help some of these people out. While also, going to your senior homes, maybe want to blow out those heaters. It's been a while since they've been used. I did that opportunity on yesterday for some people in my district, and it was necessary. So if you have some time, some free time, please consider that as well. Finally, I want to also thank the two speakers that came and spoke today. Definitely looking forward to Toys for Tots and previous organization that I worked with. We worked hand-in-hand with Toys for Tots, at least with providing young people with toys. And so we have not also provided young people with toys because of the situation with Toys for Tots. So we're looking forward to working and partnering with you all in whatever it takes to make sure that our young people receive some gifts this Christmas, along with Mr. Zachary and his comments as it relates to Carver's situation and with our young people. So we will meet with those departments and whoever we need to meet with, have those discussions with hopeful reconciliation concerning those issues. Thank you so much. I yield the remain.
Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to start by saying good afternoon to everybody except for the Philadelphia Phillies. And I'm going to go rogue a little bit here without the knowledge of the mayor's office or the legal department, or my colleagues here. And I'm going to go ahead and declare this in a formal way. Whereas Michael Harris II is the greatest center fielder of all time, and whereas Austin Riley drops bombs into left field when needed, and whereas Ronald Acuna Jr. is probably the MVP of the league and one of the greatest players we've seen in our generation, I hereby declare the month of October, Atlanta Braves Baseball Month in the city of Gaston. Anybody who's not a fan of the Braves has to leave town until the end of October. If you don't, you will be incarcerated and held against your will until the Braves win the World Series, authorized by the council and the mayor. And the only other thing I have to add is, I agree that I think an aquatic center would be a great addition to this city, and I believe the mayor has made a commitment in previous meetings that that will come to pass. So I look forward to seeing that presented to this council for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Minatra?
Just a reminder, and I think you see it over to my left and your right, is that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so please, schedule a mammogram and save a life.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
I don't have anything, Mr. President.
All right. To piggyback on the Breast Cancer Awareness Month, if you want a garbage, a pink garbage can, and I hope you all do, last week I said you would call the garbage department. I was incorrect. You need to call the local organization, Never Surrender, and that number is 256-549-0008. It's Never Surrender. You can Google them, you can find them on Facebook. They have the garbage cans. They purchased, oh gosh, 100 of them, I guess, the last time we ordered. I think we order cans about every other year. So they work in congruence with our garbage department, so you call Never Surrender, and they will get you a garbage can. It's $90. 65 of that goes for the cost of the can, and then $25 goes to Never Surrender. And they help lower-income folks to pay for mammograms and some other things, travel and things, if they have to go to Birmingham or somewhere like that. Great organization. They're going to come here later this month, hopefully next week, and speak to us. One reminder, at Forest Cemetery this Sunday is the event called Walk Through Time. This is a fundraiser for the cemetery. It's Sunday from 2:00 to 5:00. Is that right, Michael? And there's over 50 portraors that are interspersed throughout the cemetery, and it's really a fun event. I think the weather's going to be really nice, it's not going to be too hot, so come out. It's a great history lesson of the city of Gaston. We have a nuisance and abatement hearing this afternoon at 1:30 in this very room, if anybody is, would like to come. And then last but not least, I have a happy but yet sad announcement. Katrina Herring, who is sitting in our audience and who has been a fixture at our council meetings for, well, the last five years I've been here, I think you've attended more than we've all attended, but you're always here, but more important, you're here for the citizens of Gaston and Edgewell County through job placement, through the state of Alabama. And so she informed me just an hour or so ago that today is her last day. She is going to retire. And I told her, "We have not voted on that yet," so she may think she's going to retire, but we have to vote. I'm just teasing. Thank you for all that you've done for our community. Thank you for your friendship over the years. You're always here, you're a bright, shiny, smiley face, and we are going to miss you. We want you to come back. I didn't realize till today, you live in Calhoun County, so I'll pull a, Councilman Wilson, I hereby declare you have to move to Gaston. There you go. On behalf of the mayor and the city council, so. And Ms. Herring has requested, and I think it'd be nice for us to do this, she would like to have a picture made up here with the city council. So if you will come now, then we will have that picture, and then we will be adjourned after the picture. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, President.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
Well, no, not really.
Okay, all right.
I just want to thank this wonderful council for all the work that you've done, and how you supported the career center on all our reserves, especially our job fairs. If it was not for our council, we wouldn't have been able to be successful in our job fairs, and replace a lot of people on the job. Yes.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
All right.
Congratulations.
There's some folks behind, I'll make sure, there we go.
Thank you.
I got a picture, all right? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.